Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open the meeting because we have lengthy executive sessions at the end of the meeting. So I want to get moving on the business. Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the meeting, the Cohasset's a meeting of the Cohasset Select Board. It is Tuesday, October 27th. Tonight's meeting is being conducted on the Zoom platform and live streamed on Cohasset's Facebook page. The public is also invited to participate on the Zoom platform, which can be accessed using the link provided at the top of the posted agenda for tonight's meeting. The Zoom app can be loaded onto a smartphone, laptop, tablet, or other computer. Members of the board and other scheduled participants will be able to participate when called on by the chair. Board members will be able to ask questions of any participant and all votes taken at this meeting will be by roll call. Members of the public who wish to ask questions are asked to utilize the question and answer feature on Zoom. And must be in the Zoom meeting and must include their full name and address for the public record. The chair will review questions and if appropriate, direct them to a participant for a response. Please note that comments on platforms other than Zoom will not be monitored. This meeting is being recorded and will be available for viewing on Cohasset 143 TV. So I will start the meeting asking for a roll call vote. Jack, are mute?
Jack Creighton here.
Corey, you're on mute.
Corey Evans here, sorry.
Diane Kennedy here.
Paul Schubert here.
Harry Thompson here.
Okay, we all had a rush through dinner, so we're a little slow on the uptake. The meeting is open and I'd like to ask everybody to who's would like to join us in saluting the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first order of business is any public comment for items that are not on the agenda. I don't, I don't see anybody in the waiting room. You know, if somebody pops in and we're moving along and has public comment, I will acknowledge that at that time. Okay, first thing up is the board and committee appointments. And a request to make an appointment to the Board of Registars. Our town clerk asked us to consider Diane Benson is a reappointment to the Board of Registars for a three-year term.
So moved.
We appoint Diane Benson to the Board of Registars for a three-year term as a reappointment.
Second.
Okay, roll call vote.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Harry Thompson, aye.
And just while we're discussing the Board of Registars, Chris, you know, we've talked about this a little bit the other day, but it's really an incredible job that all of the clerks office and officers and assistants are doing and getting the, the large early voting and also the mail-in ballots recorded. I, I did a mail-in ballot on Sunday or Friday afternoon, I dropped it in and by Sunday night I was on the Secretary of State's listing as, as having logged in and ready to be counted. So I know this isn't unusually high turnout and obviously a lot of people voting early and through mail. So kudos to everyone for monitoring that and keeping us going. Jack?
Yeah, I just think we should note that Diane Benson has done a tremendous job for a very long period of time. So I think a little special recognition for the work that she's done. Thank you, Diane.
Great, thank you. Yeah, thanks Diane. Anyway, so.
Awesome, awesome updates for you later in the meeting. To talk about the, the vote, voting in general.
Okay.
Okay.
During Town Manager Comment or?
Correct.
Okay, great, thank you. Okay, next up, and I'd like to invite Lauren Linden. This is a fairly momentous occasion. Because tonight we will, we will be asked to vote on the final, the final piece of the transfer of the 808 Jerusalem Road property from the tax custodian in town to the Affordable Housing Trust. As you may remember, this was a vote at town meeting. And there was a lot of paperwork, including the typical real estate transfers, indeed, document preparation. So we have that, we had that in our packet and I'll ask Lauren just to kind of fill in any of the blanks and, and get us up to speed on what we're going to be voting on and doing tonight.
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. It's nice to see you all. So as Dan just explained, this is sort of the next step in the transfer of land from 808 Jerusalem Road that will go from ownership of the town tax custodian to the Affordable Housing Trust. These documents that you have, there's two before you. One is actually the quick claim deed that runs the land that will be filed at the Registry of Deeds. That makes the explanation that you are making that transferred ownership. And then you'll have a smaller document there that actually will only be signed by the chair. That's just a certificate of the vote that gets taken tonight. And the reason this is done this way, it's just sort of a best practice to do both. It was explained that it's sort of belt and suspenders approach to file the registry. And again, so these documents were prepared by John Rogiri, who's an associate of Paul Durens's Town Council. And it was actually circulated to the Affordable Housing Trust Special Counsel Cindy Amara. She did come back with minor edits on the certificate of vote document, had no edits on the quick deed document. And those edits were sent to John Rogiri who approved them and sent them along for you all for tonight. So with that, that's the explanation of what you're doing tonight. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks Lauren. And to hang out if anybody has any questions. Chris, I just want to understand the mechanics. I imagine that the vote will be what's listed on the, the final page of the packet that we got. The certificate of vote, so the motions there. And then how are we supposed to go about signing these because they do need to be done with a notary?
Um, yeah, that's a good question. It may be easy, well, for certainly your certification has to be done that way. I think the deed does too, right?
Yeah, the deed does with each individual signature.
Yeah, um, I think the best way to do this. And it's a bit of a challenge with the clerk's office, you know, being so election centric. I can have Tracy set up times with all of you that are convenient to come by. And then, because then we could have you, you know, come in, you can sign it and it could be notarized right in front of someone in the clerk's office or someone else here who has a notary. Is that, that's the easiest answer. That's what we can do. Because of the notary, otherwise we would just circulate all of your houses, but because of the notary piece, we don't have any traveling notaries, so.
Okay.
If I had a police officer notary, that would make life a lot easier.
Yeah, really. So before we just get to the vote, just, just in terms of the paperwork, and I know Tracy just sent out an updated version of the quick claim deed with, I think Cory's name spelled correctly.
Still wrong.
It's still wrong. Okay, well, as is mine, so.
Did I send you the wrong one? Is that why? Because it was corrected?
Did you crack the Diane with two N's and the Cory without an E?
Yes.
Okay, then you may have sent us the wrong one.
I just got, still has the, has the misspellings.
Okay.
At least me, I didn't check Diane's name, I'm sorry.
Okay.
That's all right.
I can assure you, I can assure you that originally we'll have the right spelling.
It is right. The one she just sent is correct for both of you.
Thank you. I thought so.
You're right, Tracy. I see it.
Um, all right, I'm gonna double check that because I saw one, okay.
Oh, you know, Jack, are you? Chris. I just, I, I sent it a packet only because it had John Rogers memo, wanted to make sure you all had that.
That's the confusion. Okay.
That's my fault, so.
Tracy, yours is perfect. Thank you so much.
Yes. I should know better. I should have let Tracy send that out.
Yeah, exactly. That's what happens when you try to over deliver. Jack, are you okay being Jack Creighton? As opposed to Jonathan?
Probably should be Jonathan.
Yeah.
I mean, I use in a lot of my work things, I use Jack interchangeably. But 20 years down the line and nitpicker could, so let's make sure it's Jonathan.
Yeah, I think, okay. And at the, and at the bottom of, I just want to confirm because I'm, I don't want to go back and forth to my email box and lose track of where I am, but that Diane is spelled with one N, right? And not two. Okay. So those are the three things we need to update. Jonathan Creighton, Cory with an E and Diane with one N. Okay.
Make sure they're done.
Okay, does anybody have any questions relating to this for Lauren or anybody else that might know an answer? And if not, I will ask for a motion from anyone who has the motion ready to roll.
I can put it up on the screen if you need it.
Yeah, I'm looking for the motion right now.
Motion is on the certificate of vote page. I mean, it's actually not written as a motion, so you'll have to.
So there it is. So if you just put move that select.
Yeah, I can handle that. I can handle that if you.
Go ahead, Jack.
I like the move that the Select Board hereby approve the transfer by the town of Cohasset of the property owned by the town of Cohasset to the town of Cohasset, Massachusetts Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, as shown on Cohasset Assessor's Map, Lot 30, known and numbered as 808 Jerusalem Road. And further that the Select Board authorized the recording of a deed together with a certificate of this vote to be recorded with the Norfolk County Registry of Deeds.
Is there a second? Second, all right, and a roll call vote.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Harry Thompson, aye.
Okay, well, that is a big moment. Thank you very much. The Affordable Housing Trust will be pleased and, and just in that vein, I know Lauren is working with the trust members and council on or in procurement on an RFP for what the next step might be to put affordable housing units on that property. So thank you. Thanks Lauren.
Take care.
Tracy, I'm available all day tomorrow, so anytime is fine for the signature.
And quickly, does it have to be by the, the town notary or a notary? I've got, my neighbor's a notary, so.
Yeah, I mean, if, if whatever reason you can't come down here and we need to get it to your house, we can, we'll improvise as long as you have a notary in your backyard. So, or in your house.
All right, and you have notaries at Town Hall, probably a few.
Yeah, I, I, yes, I'm fairly certain we have several.
Okay, so, all right, so stay tuned on that, board members. Thank you. Chris, you want to walk us through this Tree City application?
Yes, so this has been presented already by the Open Space Recreation Committee, Peter Prescettorian made a presentation. And we were going through it and we're actually ready to go. So I actually found the online application. I was on the phone with them a couple of weeks ago. And I realized that we're good to go, except for one thing. I need this, this board needs to formally authorize the application. Doesn't cost us anything. And what it does, it, it, you know, we meet the standards. So the, the authorization from, from this board will allow the filing of the application to be considered to become a tree city. Again, as the Open Space Committee, I think, put it far more eloquently than I did. Or I will here is that it just, it kind of, it affirms the town's commitment to the green environment, to trees and to, you know, and to keeping Cohasset a beautiful community and focus and keeping our trees healthy and, and vibrant, so.
And if I, if I remember, there, there are certain grant opportunities or other designation opportunities that are enhanced by or contingent upon having the Tree City designation.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, there are. And we need, as I said, we do meet all the requirements. One of the nice things in Massachusetts is that there's a state shade tree ordinance which covers us for the local ordinance. The only thing I don't know that we, that the board did is adopted an Arbor Day proclamation on 4th Arbor Day was smack in the middle of the COVID crisis, so I don't think anybody did that this year. If, if after the applicant, if, if after you vote in favor of this, after it's filed, if there's a question, I can always come back to all of you and we can adopt it. You can adopt a, an Arbor Day proclamation, so.
Yeah, I think that's something easy to do. Okay, any questions on Tree City approval to file an application?
So the motion would be to authorize the filing of an application.
Yep.
With the for, for the Tree City USA program.
I make a motion that we adopt the Tree City application approval and file the application to the appropriate authorities for the town of Cohasset.
Sounds good. Is there a second?
Second.
All righty, any other questions? Okay, roll call vote, Jack.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Corey Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Harry Thompson, aye.
Great, thank you very much. All right, moving right along. So the last, last we spoke, we, Chris gave us a little bit of an update on reaching out and getting some community a kind of advocacy work going in the, with our neighboring communities regarding the Green Bush and the, and the ferry service and the MBTA proposed cuts. I just sent a letter like 20 minutes ago and we don't necessarily, last week we did, we did vote to kind of enable Chris or any of us to kind of go forth and speak on behalf of the community on this matter. But what I want to do today is turn to Cory first, who just got off an MBTA Advisory Board meeting. And then also get an update from Chris on where we stand in terms of getting a website together or any other activity to get the public engaged more. And then obviously just a general sense of we're going to get a letter in the mail as soon as we possibly can without typos and, and, and just keep this ball rolling. The only good news is that the Financial Management Board of the MBTA postponed the meeting where they were going to open the public comment period from November 2nd to November 9th. So that gives us a little more time to get as much kind of discovery into their hands, whether it's by email, you know, people sending in emails or letters or phone calls. And then whatever happens on November 9th will open up the public or an official public comment period through December. So Cory, if you don't mind, I'm going to turn it over to you with any other updates.
Sure, yeah, I mean, as I spoke about previously, there's a kind of a team of people, including Joe Moschino, Senator O'Connor. A bunch of other Select Board members were all on this weekly call and we're trying to coordinate our messaging. A couple of things happened recently, which is including the sit residents or citizens of Hull who launched savetheboat.org or savetheferry.org are on TV. You may have seen them in the local paper. So there is a pretty good grassroots campaign getting the word out about the ferry. We don't have the same amount of enthusiasm around the Green Bush train, however. And that's a train line where we're looking at, at minimum, our elimination or reduction of midday service and elimination or reduction of weekend service. So these are two things that are important to, I mean, commuting is one thing, but you know, the midday service is used by people that are going in to, for healthcare or people that work off hours, including those who work at the hospitals in Boston. Or if you're in, you know, hospitality and you're working off hours. So, you know, even though you think about commuter rail as these peak times, there's a variety of people in between that, you know, it's really important that the rail runs on time throughout the day as well. So that's, that's one thing. The one thing that's on discussion is that there has been, and you might have heard over NPR, they did a little bit of a feature on a funding bill that was in front. And what I think we can do as a board is also encourage our elected representatives at the state level to push to reallocate funding, which was supposed to go to expanding, you know, infrastructure projects to also going towards maintaining existing service. There is funding in front of both the, the Senate and the House that combines a lot of new projects and that kind of stuff really should be going to maintaining what we already have right now. So those are the kind of the things that are, are front of mind. Chris Senior has taken the lead on launching a site which is dedicated to not just the boat, but the Green Bush as well. So we should see that pretty soon. And that's really exciting. And the one thing that came out of today is that we talked to the President or the CEO of Boston Harbor Cruises. And the boat is often considered something that, oh, you can just run it different times. But what he explained to us is that, you know, boats, you know, there are so many jobs, high paying jobs that are surrounding, you know, that rely on the ferry, actually Operation the Ferry. Ship captains, for instance, or anyone who maintains the boats, these are high paying jobs. And the people that work for Boston Harbor Cruises, actually, a lot of them come from our communities. I mean, there's a lot of employees from Hull and from Situit and, and from Cohasset as well. And if this boat goes away, these people can't stay and we'll lose that access for, you know, you know, years and years to come. So the one thing I do want to stress to everybody is whatever changes are made are going to take a very long time to undo. And it's just, it's now is not the right time for us to be cutting services. Cuts that may last five, 10 years or longer. We need to, you know, fight to save these things. That way, next summer, when we're looking at this, at the, at the, hopefully the backend of this pandemic, we still have these infrastructure, these, these infrastructure pieces. So again, savetheferry.org is a great place to go. That's run by some residents of Hull. Send us a message. You can send any of us on the Select Board an email. We will get it to you. There's also a phone line where you can send a voicemail to the people that are making this decision and that's really impactful. I'll post the, the phone number, we'll have it sent out on a different social media platforms. And if you use this, these services, we need your voice. It's just, it's the best way to save these things is for people to speak up. So thanks for giving me the time to speak on it.
Great, thanks Cory. And just, just to kind of put an exclamation point on that, what you just said. I mean, I think it's going to be great for us as a board, as leaders in the community to send the letter. And, and we hit upon in the letter, the draft letter, we hit upon pretty much everything Cory said in terms of, you know, employees getting back and forth midday. You know, just the environment, what's going to happen to the roads? If all the commuters are all of a sudden driving into Boston, all of that, we tried to cover in the letter. If you have anything else you think is missing, just send it to Tracy and Chris so we can get the letter out in the next couple of days. But I think it's even more important for the people that are using the commuter rail or the, the rail line or the ferry, whether it's for, you know, to go in for, to go to the museum and go to dinner or to go to work or whatever it is, those are the voices that are going to add up and multiply and really have some impact, I think, on the decision making. Cory, really quickly, before I ask Chris to jump in. Like the last MBTA Advisory Board meeting, I got the impression that it was, I just felt like it's kind of a done deal. I mean, do, do people still feel that way or do they feel? And I'm not saying that to change how we fight, but you know, is there, is there any more optimism about, you know, the, these impactful statements that are being made?
So in the meetings that, that have taken place, what struck me is the small amount of time that's been being dedicated to the decisions that are affecting our communities. I have a four-hour meeting, there may be 15 minutes of discussion about what is impacting us. They spend, you know, 10 minutes playing voicemails, but they didn't address any of them. So based on that, the amount of time that's being spent on this, it does seem like there's an effort to kind of push this through before anyone kind of notices. So that's why we need to really speak up and make a lot of noise because that's the only way we can actually get some attention here. Because it's just too easy for, for the people that make decisions to try to push us out of the way.
Right, thank you. Chris, do you want to give us, Jack, do you have a question? Sorry.
Yeah, Cory, to what extent with the governor away and on this decision?
So he, he will have a say in this and that's going to be coming after this meeting. There's going to be a few proposals that are being made. And then he's going to, both the House, the Senate and the governor are going to have their own responses. You know, so far, everyone kind of throughout the political, you know, chain has been supportive of maintaining the MBTA service as much as possible. We'll see how much of that is lip service and how much of that is real, once we get these proposals. But I think it's important for us to be at the ground level where, you know, in any good negotiation, you don't, you want to have the, you know, the least, the, the worst proposal be pretty good. So if there is a proposal that eliminates what we, you know, what we rely on, we've already kind of lost. So we need to affect this process before the governor makes a decision, before the, this, the legislation is making a decision.
My suggestion, thank you Cory, my suggestion.
Where you, you might be heading.
I would just suggest that Cohasset has been a lot of support for the governor. A lot of political support, a lot of financial support. And I would reach out to our fellow townspeople who have provided that support to the governor. And remind him how crucial this is to Cohasset. And I suspect that those types of comments will be listened to. So I urge all my fellow citizens, especially if you had support for, for the governor, to let him know that we're here and we'd like his help. Thank you.
Thank you. I think the governor, the Stephanie Pollock, who's the Secretary of Transportation and the MBTA General Manager and the MBTA's Financial Management Control Board, FMCB. And, you know, you can go online and look them up and they each have interesting, especially the Financial Management Board. You know, one of them is, is in the hospital, represents the hospitality and restaurant industries. Another one is in charge of like the 128 business belt. And I started to think about like, we, you know, thinking of this MBTA issue, I think about, you know, Cohasset to Boston. But again, if you're putting thousands more cars on the road, you know, what's that going to do to traveling to Newton or Metro West area 128, where a lot of our residents also work? Chris, can you give us a quick little update on where we stand in terms of the John Guilfoyle Associates and how that is going to play out over the next couple of weeks?
I have, I got a commitment from Situit this evening and I got a scaled back proposal. It's a little more modest than the initial one. And I, and so I'm, I'm going to ask all of you tonight, just to, I mean, I could spend the money. I just want your affirmation to spend the money. Up, up to $5,000 as the town share of this. I don't think we'll go that high. I think we'll be closer to four. And it's, it's a website, it's PR services and it's, and it's, it's a a potential production of a video with commuters and others talking about how critical it is. As part of the package, they would.
Have they talked about the time? I mean, how, how quickly this is.
They get to, they get, they should be able to get the website up. Okay, right. They, they should get the, the website up. With, well, probably, I, I think I said within a week and I'm going to try to get to the scale back faster than that. And then they've already seen what the state of the fair looks like and what's going on with that one, so.
The thing is, I mean, if it's more than a week and we're looking at.
No, no, I hear you.
Just useless. Yeah. We need to. Okay. You understand. Thank you.
No, I, I, I talked to the folks there today. That's how, you know, we had to get everybody together and unfortunately that didn't happen.
Absolutely.
So.
Just a quick question on the website. What's the, what's the goal of the website? Because I know that, you know, Joan, Representative Moschino and Senator O'Connor, they both are pushing out, you know, the important, you know, links to emails. But, you know, is the website just going to be sort of a place that points you to places or is it going to be gathering, you know, signatures or, or something like the Save the Ferry?
Yeah, it's supposed to be, it's supposed to be all of those things. It's supposed to include content and it's supposed to be a portal too, to be able to get, you know, input. So that's, you know, again, I, the, when we first talked about this, nobody had the ability to pull something together. I'm glad those two Hull residents did, unfortunately. There aren't people that could just pop that up and make it run and, you know, tomorrow. So on all these things. And I think this will seek, I don't also have more, but I think that's same idea. If anyone's seen it, you're going to save the ferry.gov or got org.
Org, I think, yep. Harry? Yeah, I love this idea, but I'm worried that just having a website isn't going to be enough of an incentive for people to click on. Is this going to include kind of a social media campaign, Chris, where we're posting videos and other links that people can interact with? Because if it's just a website, how are we going to get people to know about it and click on it? I'm more worried about getting that message out. If we spend money on a website and then no one knows it exists and doesn't see it, I don't know if that's the best use of our time. I feel like we need to be on social media, on every platform, giving people the chance to respond and also interact with these posts and sign things and make phone calls and that type of thing.
Complete social media integration is, is one of the key phrases that is in the proposal. So as they understand that this all has to be integrated and if that includes putting up Facebook and if we have someone starting Instagram, whatever is necessary. So people can interact, right? I agree. Websites of all themselves are static.
Right.
Be a, a landing pad, not the be all and end all, right? If this is a, it's, it's a focus, it's not the thing, so. But also, yeah, by the way, if you want to help consult with them, I'm happy to, I mean, if any, you know, anyone wants to share some ideas, I'm happy to plug.
The only, I, yeah, I, I don't know if you need a vote because you, you have, you're authorized to spend the money. I'd, if, I mean, I say go for it and I think to Cory's point, like in, and you know, I've, I've mentioned this in the last couple of days, like this has to happen ASAP. Or, or, or it might as well be scaled back to just social, you know, and, and making, pushing that out. But time is of the essence. Like everything has to be in before November 9th and next week is going to be, no matter how we look at it, it's going to just be a very difficult week where people are diverting their attention to other things.
And, and you're sorry, Carrie, I didn't mean, but if there may be a way to tweak the deliverable schedule here, to Carrie's point, if we can get some content out first, I mean, the website is kind of a more of a structural. Out first. I mean, the website is kind of a, more of a structural thing. And we want to have the collection part, but we don't want to wait for that. So they, they can deliver us images and videos or whatever. And we can start running with that immediately. That'd be best.
Yeah, that's, I agree. Content right now and ways to, to make a difference, I think is critical. I'm just so furious about the timing of this. It's, I think it's 100% done on purpose as a, when we're all distracted by an election coming up, by a lot of other things going on. I'm furious that they're trying to do this right now. I'm furious about the timing. And I really think that we all need to make sure we give people the chance to know how they can fight back in this next week.
And that's why we let the bit, the governor know the people who go has supported him. We, we, we have to let these guys know because Carrie's 100% right. That this is exactly in this, in the darkness, this is being slipped through because it's controversial and we're getting a good screw in.
And part of this is the idea, sorry Paul, uh, um, the idea that this is not the right time to make the call. You know, next summer, if we know what we're going to be, we can make that decision. Then if we understand the budget things, we understand we can't have empty trains running all over the place, but. Right now is not the right time. So what we're really asking for is, don't do this now. Wait, you know, until the summer when we have a better idea of where we're going to be as an economy, as a, as a culture, as a society.
Yep. Paul?
No, I, I totally agree. This, this has been, you know, uh, underhandedly done and through subterfuge, put through. At a time when none of us can easily get out, protest organized, get disciplined enough because we are, are incredibly. Organized for other things that are involving our lives, the town, uh, the election, uh, the pandemic, I mean, all this, the crap that is going on. It, this is not the time to do it. In addition, th- this is an infrastructure that if you remove it, just like what Cory said. If you remove a, a boat pilot that is trained for 20 years on, in the North Atlantic and that person moves. You're not going to get a boat pilot or a boat captain to run a ferry on this route in the near future. And just by that alone, the, the level of. Quality of the, of the training of these people that are involved with the train and involved with the, the boat will be a, a, an irreplaceable aspect of the economy. And they are well-trained, they're educated, they're well-paid and they are irreplaceable. And this is not anything that we should do in the middle of. You know, a week before an election saying, oh, let's just do it. No, we need to, we need to limp this through to the spring and then we'll take another look at it. But right now, not the, not the time.
Okay, pull all the stops out. I think we're in agreement on that. Um, Chris, you have what you need from us?
Yep. Yeah, I got a, I got a green light, so I'm wrong.
Green light. Okay. Um, okay. Next up is um, our community update and um. And a discussion on offering um, some guidance relating to Halloween. Um, Chris, do you want me to? Tee this up in terms of the letter we received from the school committee? Or do we want to get to that after our presentation?
Well, I do think it's important to set the, the context of the conversation you got about Halloween. Um, so Pam is going to give a little more context tonight about where we are. Uh, and again, I think as everyone uh, has seen, uh, because of an uptick in cases last week, the town actually went to a, a yellow color, which is the second highest. And um, you know, actively watching where we are. Uh, now the good news is that has not directly impacted the schools. That said, um, i- i- it's, it's a, it's not, it's a, it's a concerning reality. Um, so um, I know. So um, I know she wants to talk a little bit about that, but again, I think that all kind of feeds into the conversation. Anyway, so you know, the school committee did make that request. It's probably just a swell start with that.
Yeah, so I'll, I'll just start there. Um, we, the board, um, the select board received um, a letter from the Cohasset um, School Committee. You know, talking about the fragile ecosystem they have going on um, in terms of their hybrid model of teaching and, and, and really trying to keep. The students and the um, teachers safe and, and really it's a house of cards, you know? Um, and so they had a discussion and took a vote to ask the select board to um. Make some kind of pronouncement in prohibiting um, trick or treating, um, which obviously is something we need to discuss. They concluded their letter, which we have all had for a few days, um, basically saying that they would be happy to work with us to fashion inappropriate definitive directive. That dissuades Cohasset residents from engaging in risky behavior. So those are just sort of the, 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 the big points from the school committee letter. Um, and I think I'll just leave it at that. And then I'd like to, you know, get the community update from um. From Pam and the chiefs and anybody else. And then we can talk through what might be the appropriate messaging from, from us, um, if any. So. Um, Pam, you first?
Yeah, I guess I'm first. Um, Chris, you gonna pull up um, PowerPoint? So I'll just kind of start anyway. Um, so the way your risk level is determined and the, on the chart of the state of Massachusetts where it shows all the different colors. It's based on your average daily incidence rate of COVID cases. So Cohasset had been in gray for a long time. And then last week, our incidence rate went up and it was an average daily incident rate of 6.8, 6.8 cases per 100,000 people. So 6.8 cases rounded up to seven cases. If you exceed eight cases per 100,000 people, you go from yellow to red. So one of the questions that, of course, it comes up is, well, what happens if the town turns to red? So this is a, a brief summary of um, what happens in terms of business sectors. So for outdoor gatherings, currently we're in phase three step two, which means you can have an outdoor gathering of 100 people. But if we have to go back and we were at um, red for three consecutive weeks, you'd have to go back to 50 people. Which is significant because, you know, if you lasted red for three straight weeks and you were in December and you had some like holiday events planned. You know, it would have to be scaled back from 100 people to 50 people. It would also significantly impact gyms and fitness centers. Currently they're open at 50% capacity. They would have to go back to 40% capacity. Libraries 50% to 40%. Restaurants are primarily affects um, entertainment. So currently there's um, like bands are allowed, but there's not supposed to be any singing. If we have to go back a step. It would also mean that you couldn't have um, wind instruments or brass instruments.
Pam, can I interrupt you for two seconds?
Sure.
I'm seeing some words scroll across the bottom of this PowerPoint. I don't know if anybody else is seeing it, but it's making me a little nervous.
Really? Cause I didn't even put any words down there and I don't see it.
I know. I'm just, I just want to make sure.
Looked like um, closed captioning or something.
Yeah. You see it Cory?
Possible speaking notes that you put in the bottom of PowerPoints, maybe any type of speaker's notes. I'm not sure.
Yeah, no, I didn't even put any speaker notes in there. It's, yeah.
Chris was on a call and it was him and he just stepped on the room.
Okay, good. I just wanted to make sure we were getting.
No, I just grabbed him. It's fine.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Sorry.
Okay. I'm sorry. No problem. And then the, the final thing is fitting rooms. Um, if you had to go back a step, it really would be fitting rooms. It says only for businesses where operations are necessary. And I believe that meant that was for like bridal shops that, who said that like our business couldn't survive if we didn't have our fitting room open. So. I think um, say like the sporting goods store or something like that, their fitting room would have to close. And then if we could go to the next slide. The next slide gives the um. The potential impacts to schools. Tracy, you running the show? There we go. So factors that impact uh, school remote learning. So if a school is in a district that's reported as red for three consecutive weeks, you have to at least consider having the kids go back to all remote. But there's also other factors that are included as well. It's like, if there was also a need for extensive cleaning of the building. If the mobile testing unit results um, or other test results suggest widespread transmission in schools occurring. Either a school, either within the teachers or students. Or if there's widespread absences e- either among students or teachers. For the most part, um, the problem with Cohasset is it's a very small town. So it doesn't take a lot of numbers to kick into red, you know, which red obviously looks very, very alarming. So. You could just have, I don't even know, like nine or 10 cases and you'd be kicked into red and you probably would not close schools. It would really be if the virus took off and was really seen, you know, and a lot of numbers in the school. It's hard to say what the number would be. You'd have to kind of really sit down and discuss it. But if this, at this time with the numbers that we have, even if we go up to red. And still keep it like to a dozen or less, probably wouldn't have to go remote. But this is just something to think about.
I think, I think that's important context, just from the school's point of view, obviously, you know, that nobody wants to go. Nobody wants to have one case, let alone four or eight. But um, I think that's where the position they're in is at, at what point, you know, does the, what we've built toward become at risk? And, and, and thus their request of us. Um, Chief Sylvia, are you next up or?
Yeah, I just wanted to update the board on um, the Halloween guidance that we've been getting from both um. The Center for Disease Control and Prevention, as well as the Department of Public Health. So we've got a very quick PowerPoint that just kind of outlines this and uh. If uh, Chris, I can get Chris to, to pop that up. Um, it's, I promise not to kill you with death by PowerPoint. So obviously it's the Halloween guidance for 2020. And next slide please, Chris. So this is just Centers for Disease Control and Prevention. Right off the get-go says many traditional Halloween activities can be high risk for spreading viruses. There are several safer alternative ways to participate in Halloween. Massachusetts DPH has turned around and they pointed everybody to the CDC. And they said that residents should follow safe and healthy tips to participate in Halloween activities that may limit the risk of exposure to COVID-19. So that being said, uh, go to the next slide, please, Chris. The highest risk activities and should be avoided to help prevent the spread of COVID-19. Number one, traditional trick or treating where treats are handed to children. Who go door to door. Obviously, what they're trying to tell you is Halloween of 2019 is not a good idea. We go to the second point, which is trunk or treat, which uh, I understand some people have participated in, in the past. Where again, kids are going from person to person, face to face, and either reaching into a communal bowl or taking treats from individuals. And then the third point, and the one that we really want to get to everybody, is attending crowded costume parties held indoors. Indoor activities for Halloween are a bad idea, other than with your own family. Next slide, please, Chris. So what did they do? They, they gave us a list of lower risk activities. The first one, carving or decorating pumpkins. I believe we're in the process of that right now. And I saw a lot of pumpkins downtown. I thought it looked really, really great. Uh, again, carving or decorating pumpkin pumpkins outside at a safe distance with neighbors or friends. And again, we're talking about distance. Decorating your house, having a virtual Halloween costume contest. Obviously, if you stay home, you stay safe. That's a good idea. Having a Halloween movie night with people you live with. Again, same situation. Uh, next slide, Chris. Then they went on to say having a scadger, scavenger hunt in your household with your household members. Again, good idea. And then the final one is doing Hallowe- Halloween scavenger hunts where you're outdoors, wearing an appropriate mask and keeping at least six feet apart. And in small groups is what they're really driving at. So that's kind of the low risk activities that they, that they're really recommending. And the last piece I want to mention is, and I, I mentioned the masks. So the mask or face covering. A costume mask is not a substitute for a proper cloth mask or procedure mask or whatever you're going to wear. Okay? If it's made of less than two or three layers of breathable fabric such as a gator. It does not do the job that a proper mask will do. And then. If you are going to be outside, you are going to be anywhere near people to wear your protective cloth mask. But don't wear it underneath your Halloween mask. Do not create a situation where you have difficulty breathing because of the masks that you are wearing. So that's the quick update on what the CDC and the DPH have kind of given us as what is good. And what they would really, really prefer that we not get involved in.
Okay. I, um, Cory?
Yeah, if you don't mind, could you speak a little bit to either Pam or, or Chief Sylvia about where the, where the risk is here? Is the risk more in, you know, people? Sharing, you know, hands in a candy jar? Or is it more the people congregating together?
I see Dr. Schubert wants to answer that question, but I'll weigh in very quickly. I think it's a combination. Uh, obviously what they're trying to say is that if you bring people and the governor has made this comment multiple times. The problem with coronavirus right now is people that are familiar with each other, being too familiar with each other. So if you bring a, a group of individuals into a closed space, they're not more than, or they, you know, they're closer than six feet and they're not wearing masks. It's a bad idea. The idea of reaching into a communal bowl is also a bad idea because of, again. The fact that you can spread the virus in that way also. So what we're trying to do is remind people that it's not an either or, it's a both. If you're going to be out and about, you need to wear a mask and you need to stay six feet away from people and you need to take care of your hands by. Either hand sanitizers or whatever, um, so that you do not create that, that situation where we're spreading the virus.
Paul, did you want to weigh in?
Yeah, um, the, the primary method of, of exposure is respiratory. The primary method of exposure is respiratory repeatedly. Whether it's five minutes over three times a day or 15 minutes over once. There's CDC sent out recommendations as far as multiple repeated episodes with short lengths of time. So if you have a small group that happens to be on a trick or treat route and they meet 10 times and they meet 10 times for two minutes. That, that hits the, that hits the bell. It is less of a concern with the contact. It is still present with contact from. Physical contact, touching, things like that. But it is mainly respiratory. I, I will go to the, the Rose Garden event, outdoors in sunlight. And that was a super spreader event. Uh, I can, I can cite you what happened at the Brigham Women's Hospital. It was repetitive, small. Episodes of short length of time, it outbreak. And it was a, a break in, in um, protocol. And that caused an incredible outbreak very quickly, very fast. What we've seen in Massachusetts is that the widespread community spread is coming back. It, it seems to be in the smaller, what we call clusters, generally three to five, where it is in a household. So someone out and about gets it. They come back in, they sit down and they take their mask off in the house. And they may be in a different part of the house, but they're repeatedly. Contacting the members of the household three to five minutes at a time. Next thing you know, the household has it and your cluster is born. The, the widespread uh, exposure i- is what you would see. So if you're out and let's say it's dark and it's windy, but. The kids are close to one another too many times over the course of the night. That's a, that's an extremely high risk. So. You know, I, I'm going to come down and say, I, I really, um, knowing that the winters is upon us for all practical purposes. People are now, you know, staying indoors, kids are back in school. That the numbers are going to rise extraordinarily fast if these sorts of behaviors occur. Because you'll get an outbreak of a cluster, they won't know they're contaminated, they'll go out to their friends and then it'll, it'll spread. We've seen an incredible large number of increases in the hospital in Commonwealth wide. But there seem to be occurring from these small clusters and these clusters will spread and they'll, they'll spread quickly. I, I can't underscore the, the ability of this to spread. It is along the lines of a measles type virus. Transmissibility. It, it is uh, highly transmissible. So it is respiratory, it is respiratory, is respiratory. And if, if you. Prevent the contact closeness and number of contacts with kids or whatever, you'll, you're going to keep it under control. We've done it well in this town. We, we're, this town is designed for a quarantine. You've got big houses, separate bathrooms, separate um, entrances, no, no large. Apartment buildings or things like that. But these sorts of behaviors like Thanksgiving or like a Christmas gathering. Is going to cause this to spread. So I, I would really say to not have any uh, large gatherings. The best you would do, I would say, is a virtual um, Halloween party and show the, show the masks, show the. Halloween party and show the show the masks, show the gowns and show the all the suits and everything online. That's that's my view.
I I would like us to. We have about 10 minutes left before we should be getting heading into an executive session. I want to make sure. Any of the other select board members and. Emergency management folks weigh in, but I I would like to suggest that we consider, you know, working with the school committee. With with their request and and coming up with sort of a just a general statement, asking residents. You know, to exercise caution and judgment and follow the CDC guidelines, which we can reiterate. You know, talking about the importance of wearing masks and 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 ask them, you know, to not. You know, necessarily go door to door trick or treating and to find other ways of celebrating what is really a fun, happy holiday. I I think, you know, to the extent that we can frame this in a, you know, we're not prohibiting anything. We're just, we're just putting out an advisory where we're recommending certain behaviors. And I I would be comfortable with something along that line. The other thing that I want to bring up that we don't, that I haven't spent a lot of time thinking about, but I have heard from people about is. A lot of people are very uncomfortable having kids come to their house. I mean, there are elderly residents who would like nothing more than to see a cute little kid dressed up looking for candy. And want to put out candy and want to do something. But they don't want necessarily people coming to their 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 house. So I think to the extent that we can message, you know, considering the the person who you might be knocking on the door of. And if not necessarily being. Something that they're going to be very comfortable with. So I want to try to narrow that discussion. Jack had his hand up and then Carrie.
Yeah, I I think I don't really like the the lockdown, nobody does. But I think in this case, in this town, right now, we have to recognize that, and I think we should move this along and work with that. I would say for a discussion later on, one of the impacts is going on in in Cohasset. And other areas is that increase in domestic violence, increase in alcoholism. Increase in depression, especially virulent for young children or or teenage children. And that's a discussion for another time, but I think that we need to, we need to be aware of that. And later on, when things calm down, we need to, as a community, seriously address those issues.
Thanks, Jack. Carrie.
But let's get this done now. Stop the trick or treating. I hate to say.
Yeah, I, we obviously don't have the authority to make trick or treating illegal or ban it. But I I do think that we need to stand with the school committee here and discourage against it. It's more important that we keep our kids being able to go to school and the amount of time and effort that's been put into that. It's going well and it's working and that's critical. And I do think we need to tell residents, this is. This should not be the priority. We need to keep schools open. We need to keep people as safe as possible. We want to try to avoid going into the red zone. Although I fear that might be inevitable right now, looking at our numbers. But I definitely think that we should discourage against it and tell people, you know, it don't be. Upset if you just want to keep your lights off and, you know, turn the lights off on Halloween. It's it's not going to be a bad thing to do. It's going to keep the town safer in the long run.
And I'll do my part. Anybody who has extra candy, you can drop it in my house.
You beat me to the punch. And then and then I want to, I just wanted to have Chief Quigley speak after Paul, just because we did have a conversation the other day about. How we can best message a kind of a cautionary. Message to the community. So Paul.
So, you know, the the one thing I don't want to come across saying that I'm a Grinch for Halloween. It's Saturday night. I I love Halloween. I've waited years to have Halloween on a Saturday night when I'm not working. And I I believe me, I love it and it's fun and it's it's the kids love it and the adults love it. But the one thing, please, is not to go from the the trick or treating if we don't do it, which I recommend you don't. And please don't have an interior party in somebody's house. Because that would be even worse if you decide to have a Halloween party at your house. Just don't do it. It is it is a really bad, high risk behavior. And so that's the one thing is that, you know, I would love to have Halloween, but it's not going to work this year.
Chief Quigley, I don't want to put you on the spot, but we did talk about perhaps having a a joint statement between the school committee. And the the select board with these cautions, with these recommendations of alternative activities. Going out. Have you given that more thought?
Sure. And, you know, I I echo what everybody else has said. We don't want to lose the hard work that we've we've put in, the good work that. The residents have 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 put in so far. You know, this is, you know, we're we're on a slippery slope here. And I sent, I just sent Chris. A draft of a script for a possible reverse nine one one call. That can go out maybe both Thursday and maybe Saturday afternoon jointly between you and maybe the chair or co-chair. Of the school committee, and I think that would send a powerful message to 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 our residents. And let them know that we're speaking as one town.
Corey.
Yeah, I I think I think Carrie was said an important thing, and this is as simple as. If you're an adult and you have a house, don't turn your lights on. Don't offer candy. I mean, if you take the demand away or you take the offer away, you 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 take away the demand. So please, if you're listening, be responsible, keep your lights off, put all the decorations out you want. I want to drive around and see there's some awesome cats in town. That's great, but Halloween night, keep your lights off, don't hand out candy and it'll keep all the kids safe.
Bill, Chief Quigley, sorry.
I don't get too carried away, don't worry. The, you know, and this is especially true about, you know, turning it for our our folks that are over 60 years old. Those are really the folks that we we worry about, you know, they're they're really, they're really at risk. So, you know, please, just turn your lights off and no one's going to be mad and your your house probably won't be toilet paper. It's too valuable.
So. Um, I I think what I would like to ask from the from the select board is just to, you know, authorize me as chair to work with. The chiefs and Chris and anybody else on crafting a kind of a community message alongside the school. School board, I mean, we know their position. And and put it out on a reverse nine one one. This week, just to, again, reiterate CDC guidance, reiterate best practices and how we don't want to risk. Everything we've been working so hard to, especially now where things are getting. You know, more challenging each day. Does that make sense?
Yep, I think that's a good idea.
Fine with me.
Somebody want to make a motion? Carrie.
I move that we allow Diane to proceed with working with the other members of the community in the school committee. On crafting a message to discourage people from trick or treating and participating in Halloween.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, and well, obviously, Carrie, I'll probably ask you to help me out too. And we'll share with you before it goes out nine one one. So I'll take a roll call vote, beginning with Jack.
Yeah, great. And I.
Corey Evans, I.
Diane Kennedy, I.
Paul Schubert, I.
Carrie Thompson, I.
Okay. Thank you all. Difficult topic in a way. Wish we weren't here. It's kind of crazy. I was thinking about that March 16th meeting. It's been a really, really long, long haul. And I I again appreciate everything everybody's doing in the community and among us here. So thank you. I'm going to move us along. Next on the agenda is the town manager update. Chris, I don't know if you have anything.
I must I'll talk a little bit about the election. Just got a lot of numbers from Carol. As of today, 3,337 voters have processed ballots. That's 52% of all registered voters in town. Carol tells me the highest percentage since she's been here is 87%. I think that was in 2008. And for more than that, so we'll see. But as of today, with three more days of early voting, that's tomorrow through Friday. And then ballots, you know, mail ballots can still be submitted right through Election Day itself. And then, and we have the new box out front, if you haven't seen it. So that's a bigger bigger box, take more ballots.
Chris, do you have the early voting schedule ahead of you to pop up?
Yeah, I can do that. And then. Two other quick things. Let me post up one while I'm looking for that. Let me let everybody know. As a as a safety precaution, the box out front and I'll here, let me just show this because Carol's posting this on the website, so you'll see it. The the lockbox, the drop box out front will be emptied and locked at four o'clock on Saturday, 4:00 PM. And it will be reopened on Sunday morning at eight. And that's just a security measure. It's Halloween night. We don't expect anything to happen. But it's a best practice, so the box can be locked and it will be locked during those hours. So from 4:00 PM Saturday until 8:00 AM Sunday. So if anybody wants to vote overnight on Halloween, I'm afraid you kind of have to wait until early All Hallows' Day. Or Saints, All Saints Day on November 1st, or do it before 4:00 PM on Saturday. So that is that. And.
And you get an extra hour for All Saints Day.
That's true. That's right. Everyone gets an extra hour because I, you know, that is true. Thank you for reminding, Paul. It's it's daylight savings time. Reverts back to regular time at two o'clock in the morning, I think, on on Sunday. So we all gain it. We all gain an hour of sleep.
With with all of our smart devices, we don't intentionally keep track of that like we used to. It's always a milestone in the calendar, but everything just updates.
So let me also show up the early voting schedule. So here is the. So for the next three days, it's nine to four on Wednesday, it's nine to four on Thursday. And 8:30 to one on Friday. So this is the last three opportunities to vote in person, early person. Nine to four Wednesday, nine to four Thursday, and 8:30 AM to 1:00 PM on Friday.
So Friday is the last day for for the.
Friday is the last day for in-person early voting. And then Election Day is 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM on Tuesday, November 3rd. People are obviously on that day as well. So the registration deadline is passed, I believe today is the deadline for requesting an absentee ballot. If you had already done that, there's still up to vote in person Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. I'm sorry, tomorrow is the deadline for absentee requests. So that can still be done through tomorrow. And then Wednesday, Thursday, Friday is last in-person voting. So that's the, that's the update. We got the big box out front, big blue and silver box. So. There or, you know, you can put the mail, there's a mailbox right next to it. But if you're going to jump at the mailbox, you might as well jump in the ballot boxes. We'll get it immediately. So.
That's great.
So that's that's voting, and that's all it's going to update you on. Unless any questions.
Okay, all right. Other than that, I'll go to the select board comment. Jack, you want to go first?
Yeah, very briefly, I mentioned this earlier. The psychological and emotional impact of the lockdown is is really starting to get. Very out of noticeable, shall we say. If you see a friend or a neighbor or a family member and they're, they seem withdrawn, depressed. Perhaps they're drinking more than they should. It's not something to ignore. You really have to reach out to your church. Or and I know there's some hotlines around town and sure, Safe Harbor will will help. But be aware that this is real, it is happening. And that as a community, we should be getting together to keep an eye on those of our fellow community need. Members who may be of need. It's kind of important. Thank you.
Yeah, I I just, the only thing I want to mention is on voting, I was struck a lot by some of the stories from around the nation about people waiting for. I mean, hours and hours and hours to vote. And it strikes me because of how easy it is for us to vote here in town. And we live in a place with a clerk and a state government and people that value voting and making voting accessible. So I just want to express my appreciation for that. And just note that how how important and how lucky we are that we have such, the voting is so accessible to us. It really is a special, special thing.
Great, thank you. Paul?
Yeah, so a little bit of work is going on in town. So South Main Street and Sawyer Street are still work is being done. So try to avoid those areas if you can. It's they're one way and a little bit tough on the tires if you're going to go down the road until they get fixed up. So use other options through town. The other thing from the point of view of the the numbers in the state are going up, as you know, for COVID, it's going up even worse around the country. So we're heading into a rather difficult second wave. I I want to just reassure people that we are not abandoning our efforts on the pandemic. Everyone here on this this Zoom call has put in hours and hours and hours to protect. The town of Cohasset and our citizens. We're going to keep doing that and we're not going to give up. We're going to keep making sure that we can provide for the care for people. The hospitals will be able to to handle it much better than the last time. And and if the state can do exactly what Cohasset is doing and keeping the numbers down, keeping the the contacts down. We will get through this. I will caution you for Thanksgiving when the kids come home. They're going to have to quarantine for, you know, a good length of time. And if potentially, you know, quarantine for five or six days and then get tested and potentially be off quarantine. But these are the, you know, this is the. It's it's going to be a pretty tough winter, but we we're going to be able to get through it, you know, it's it's, you know, the winter of our discontent. But the spring is going to be a much, much better situation. That's all.
Thanks, Paul. Carrie.
Oh, I want to echo what everyone's already said about the importance of voting. And, you know, I got a little emotional saying the Pledge of Allegiance earlier tonight because I feel like. We are just struggling so much as a community and as and as a country, but there's also a lot of hope that I see here. And we are working really hard on a local level. Like Paul said, we're going to get through this. People need to know what they need to be doing and what they shouldn't be doing, right? So again, reminder, keep yourself safe, keep your family safe, make sure you're social distancing, wearing a mask. Don't go trick or treating, turn off the lights at your house. And the things we need you to be doing is voting and participating in our democracy and helping us to. Save our public transportation and infrastructure. So it's never been a more important time to be an active citizen in local government and state government and national government. And I know those of you watching right now are already very involved and we're preaching to the choir. But those of you who are watching, who I assumed are involved in voting, please get your neighbors and friends and community members to also participate.
Thank you. Boy, hard to top that. Just I'll wrap it up slowly. Or quickly by saying that the Safe Harbor Cohasset Coalition, to the to the point of, you know, us being. All isolated and struggling in in very different ways are is having a Zoom webinar tomorrow night, October 28th at 5:00 PM. On relationships and substances. And it's, you know, just it it has some professionals who are going to talk a lot about unhealthy relationships, relationship substance abuse. And how that circle causes all kinds of problems for for one. And 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 also how important relationships are to being healthy. And I think that's the the takeaway message is is being healthy, staying healthy, making smart choices, staying engaged. When we can't physically connect, so it's all the more important to do other things that are keeping. Keeping you feeling very much part of a family unit or a friend unit or a community unit. So I thank you all. I would also say, please, if if ever this was a time to push information out. On our individual social media channels. It is now particularly with the MBTA, because this is something that is kind of in the shadows. And it's incredibly frustrating and we just need to get people calling everybody they know and and making a fuss. And the more voices, the more likely success we're going to have in making some differences in in people's decision making. Okay, so I have no topics, not reasonably anticipated. We have an executive session scheduled now. I will just read the executive section, executive session exemption. Look for a motion. The motion can be simply to go into executive session. We will come and the motion should also include that we will be coming out of executive session solely into public session. For the purpose of adjournment. So we keep the public meeting open and we'll have to adjourn that at the end of the end of the end of the end of the executive session. So I would like to ask for a motion to go into executive session under exception three. To discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position or the litigating position of the public body and the chair so declares. I do declare, the board will be discussing wage equity audit that the town has undertaken. Labor collective bargaining strategies and a school litigation. labor collective bargaining strategies and a school litigation matter. Is there a motion to go into executive session? All moved.
And for the purpose of and exiting into regular session for subsequent adjournment.
Great, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call vote, beginning with Jack.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Ray Evans, aye.
Diane Kennedy, aye.
Paul Schubert, aye.
Carrie Thompson, aye.
Okay, we're now in executive session. There has been a link sent to your email.
We got to, Rob, sorry, go ahead. Sorry.
No, you tell me.
We got to, we got to shut this room.
Live on Facebook.
Over to the other room. If you have any problems, just to agree, reach out to Tracy and she can reconnect.
So we will see you in the next room for executive session. Great, thank you.
Sorry, Diane.
No problem.